Everyone good? All right, we're going to reconvene this meeting, please. I believe we have a video to start off with. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to this North Penn News Update. The sounds of the annual Reading is Fundamental play that kicked off the district's RIF program in our elementary schools. Over 1,000 first graders were enchanted by their favorite storybook characters as they inspired our students to enjoy and appreciate the value of reading. Thank you to the volunteers, our theater department, and the North Penn Educational Foundation for making this magic happen each and every year for our first graders. Speaking of the Educational Foundation, the annual golf outing teed off with more than just birdies in mind. It was all about raising funds for classroom and school grants. As putters clinked and cheers echoed across the course, the event smashed records raking in an incredible $38,000 to enhance North Penn's curriculum. By the time the final hole was played, participants celebrated not only their scorecards, but the lasting impact those grants would have on the future of North Penn students, proving once again that a little friendly competition goes a long way for education. Some of that funding made today's visit from the PA Philharmonic possible. A magical musical experience this morning. The Pennsylvania Philharmonic took the stage at North Penn High School to present Reach for the Stars, an inspiring music program that blends the beauty of classical music with the excitement of space exploration. As the orchestra plays, students will hear how themes of courage, perseverance, and setting big goals are woven into both music and the quest for the stars. This unforgettable performance not only ignites their passion for music, but also encourages our musicians to dream big in their own lives, aiming for the stars with their instruments and beyond. October 2nd marked its special day at North Penn, the National School Custodian Appreciation Day. Our custodians, the unsung heroes of the school, were celebrated for the hard work they put in day in and day out to keep our buildings clean, safe, and welcoming. From mopping floors that sparkle brighter than a new pair of shoes to transforming the entire school over the summer break, our custodians do it all. With Safe Schools Week approaching, it's a timely reminder of the importance of rigorous safety training in our schools. At North Penn, the commitment to student and staff safety is evident through regular building evacuations, bus evacuations, and monthly fire drills, ensuring everyone knows exactly what to do in an emergency. This year, North Penn High School is taking it a step further, conducting its first full building evacuation to a remote location for over 3,000 students and staff. This large-scale exercise is not just a logistical feat, but a critical preparedness measure that could save lives in the event of a real emergency. These training exercises are essential for building muscle memory, reducing panic, and ensuring that everyone in the school community is equipped to respond swiftly and calmly in any crisis. Investing time in these training practices is critical to keeping our students and staff safe. At Walton Farm, the 4th graders traded in their pencils for chef hats and transformed their classroom into "The Book-Tasting Bistro." At each table, students were served a menu of different genres, including fiction, biographies, mysteries, graphic novels, fantasy, and nonfiction, all waiting to be tasted. The young chefs excitedly explored new stories, savoring each genre like a new flavor of ice cream. By the end of the day, their literary taste buds had expanded, and they left the bistro with stacks of new favorites. A big shout-out to Mr. Paul for cooking up such a fun reading adventure. At Inglewood, in Mrs. Hoffman's latest wit and wisdom lesson, the class dove into the circulatory story to uncover the wonders of the human body's circulatory system. Each group took on the challenge of dissecting two to three pages of the book, searching for the main idea, supporting details, figurative language, and the text and graphic features that brought the signs to life. After decoding these complex concepts, the students channeled their creativity to build vibrant graffiti walls bursting with drawings, key facts, and colorful phrases. On a bright and breezy morning last week, York Avenue Elementary Schools flooded the sidewalks, their sneakers squeaking in excitement for the annual National Walk to School Day. Along the way, Principal Richardson led the charge, handing out high fives and cheering like a coach at a championship game. By the time they reached the school doors, even the squirrels seemed impressed by the energy, pausing to watch the parade of Happy Kids March Past. Held annually in the fall, the Walk and Bike to School event encourages the importance of movement as a part of students' daily life. North Penn High School's Environmental Club, ENACT, set out for a day of field service at their nature preserve. Armed with gloves and shovels, the students picked up litter, cleared overgrown brush, and laid fresh mulch on the walking trail, turning it into a scenic path for future explorers. Energized by their success, ENACT is already gearing up for their next big event, a community-wide recycling day in November where they will trade soda cans for sustainability, one bin at a time. A group of North Penn employees thrilled to take advantage of a Broadway Group discount found themselves transported to 1960s Oklahoma during a riveting performance of The Outsiders. Starring Skye Lakota Lynch, North Penn High School class of 2010, as Johnny, the Tony Award-winning musical brought the classic rivalry between the greasers and the socks to life, with Skye's powerful portrayal earning him a well-deserved Tony nomination. After the show, the North Penn crew couldn't believe their luck when Skye, still in costume, met with them backstage proudly beaming as they all shouted in unison, "Stay gold, pony boy." Good advice. That's it for this North Penn News Update. As always, check out these stories and more on our YouTube, Instagram, and Facebook pages, as well as the WNPV app. Have a great night. Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels and streamed live. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board state their name and municipality. Members of the audience will limit their questions and comments to three minutes. And now, please stand for the-
Okay. So, we already did the pledge, just so everyone in the audience is aware. Mr. Gilmer, you outdid yourself that time with the monthly update, so thank you for that. That was excellent, and thank you for everyone who contributed some of those great experiences for our students. For those in the audience who were not here before we took a recess, I just want to reiterate that some of the things that I mentioned before that recess. Number one, we did take a 36-minute recess because there was a mistake on our end that we did not click "Go Live" last night at 7:00. Rather, it happened at 7:36. So, to address that, we did take a recess after doing the pledge. The other item is there is typically on our action agendas, we're finally getting to the end of them, but there is typically an item that is about adoptions of policies. That item rolls over each month. Policies are presented at the policy meeting, then they come for a first read, then they go to a second read, and adoption on that third meeting, if you will. When that item was rolled over from the last meeting to this meeting, the agenda item did say "adoption of policies," so the matter was listed as adoption. However, the details on that item did say, "The following policies are presented as a first read." When that error in the details was discovered, that was changed, and it has been brought to our attention that some people were confused about whether it was a first read or an adoption of policies. So, just to avoid the confusion and just to be as transparent as possible, we are not going to vote on that matter this evening. So, when we get to the consent items in the superintendent's report, rather than say, "I recommend items A through K," I will instead- Am I going to do B?
Yeah.
They still get repealed? B?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, I am, instead of recommending A through K, I will recommend items B through K. So, we will not take up item A tonight. That will be for a future action meeting. So, that's it. Mrs. Stoll, if you want to take it away, and I'll be back on the mic in a little while.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Okay. So, first up, we're going to have a public comment. If there's anyone that would like to make public comment this evening, now is your time to do so. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment at this time? Good evening, Mrs. Maine.
Shannon Maine, Tomason Township. I just would like to thank you for taking this action tonight and removing it from the vote tonight, and I believe that it was the right thing to do, and I appreciate you delaying the meeting as well. So, I just want to thank you. That's all.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at this time? Mr. Gallagher? Go ahead.
I assume what I want to talk about is the item being taken off the agenda, but I was going to talk about it tonight anyway, so, Don Gallagher, Lansdale. Obviously, what I want to talk about is the Title IX issue. I found some information on Title IX, just researching it, and I found descriptions and sentences that I think support to where I'm going, which is, there's, and I have the documents here, and there's numerous examples of where it stated that schools can have rules of eligibility for various sports, depending on things like fairness of play, chance of injury, and that's what I wanted to address tonight. I know there's a good chance this will go, will get passed, but maybe it could get passed with certain rules, rules of eligibility, as is described in here. One of the things I found, it says, you know, this title, Title IX applies to opportunities for athletic participation, scholarships, and how athletes are treated, and for example, says equitable locker room facilities, et cetera. And I want to use, focus on that word, equitable. How is it being equitable if young lady athletes don't feel comfortable in their locker room? If this goes into effect, and if something, you know, were to happen? I don't see that as them being comfortable going to school or participating is something that requires them to be in a locker room. And it's, you know, how can that be equitable? I think, I think things like playing time can be at risk. Scholarships, who knows? Or even maybe being on a team. It's not unlimited with how many people can be on a team. So, some, some girls may not make a team. If a trans person comes over to play on the girls' team, how do you handle that if it were to happen? The rest of my comments are along those lines, but I just wanted to repeat some of the things from the SINT documents that you guys put out, 103A and 104A. And if I could get these two pieces of paper apart, I could continue here. Okay, that's good. This is 104A, and it says here, "When district programs and activities include separation on the basis of sex, in accordance with law and regulations, including but not limited to separate restrooms, changing facilities, the district shall not implement such programs or activities in a manner that discriminates on the basis of sex, including an individual's gender identity."
Mr. Gallagher? I'm sorry, your time is up.
Really?
Yeah. It just turned red. Yep.
Next time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? Good evening.
Hi, Victoria Servini, Lansdale. I'm a mom to students from Nap and Pendale and the high school, and I visited the forum here one month ago in support of the inclusion of gender and gender identity in the North Penn discrimination policy. Because, as a mom of a transgender student, I think it's important to hold students and staff accountable to the ideals of equity and diversity. Unfortunately, just in the last week, my child was harassed due to gender by a North Penn employee at the school. This individual said gross and derogatory things to my child. They wrongly accused them of inappropriate behavior just because of the way that they looked. This should never happen to anyone, especially not someone who's supposed to be a trusted adult in our schools. This had a very bad impact on my child's mental health. It's clear to me that not only does gender need to be protected here at our schools, but a training program is needed for staff on how to best support these students. According to a recent report by the CDC that just came out last week, I think about 3% of American high school students identify as transgender, and in a district as large as North Penn here, that's about 90 to 100 students at the high school and up to 30 at each middle school. These students are part of our community, and they deserve the same dignity and educational opportunities as everyone else. Before anyone opposes a policy, any policies that aim to create a safer learning environment for transgender students, I would encourage you all to get to know these kiddos, to understand their experiences, and to see them for who they truly are. They're students, just like any other, trying to figure out their place in the world. I'm curious for those complaining tonight, how many transgender students do you actually know? And would you agree that every child, regardless of gender identity or expression, deserves that chance to feel safe and accepted? When adults in our school and community harass these students or spout fear-mongering rhetoric, it not only damages our students' self-worth and mental health, but it also creates an unsafe environment that affects their ability to learn and thrive. One of the most important things that you all can do as a school board and a district is to provide proper training to all of your staff members so they can understand and support transgender students, rather than making harmful and ignorant remarks. I don't want to engage in any political talking points, in divisive arguments. I'm not angry. I prefer to have a calm, logical conversation focused on real issues and not hypothetical situations. We need to first, include gender identity in the school's discrimination policy, and then second, ensure proper, ensure our staff receive proper training on the update to the policy. We also need to figure out the sports thing, but we can do that in a calm way. It sends the message that North Penn is a place where every student is valued and respected and supported. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Could you please write your name and township? Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else that would like to make comment this evening? Go ahead. Mrs. Blanc? Mrs. Blanc, I think he was up first.
Hello. My name is James Holliday, Lansdale. I just wanted to offer my thanks to the school board for holding the meeting this evening and express my unabashed support for the trans members of our school and of our community, and urge you to pass any and all protections you can regarding our trans students. I believe that they're very much at risk of, at worst, violence, but most, more than likely, no small degree of harassment. And, yep, please do whatever you can to help our kids. That, that does include training for people who may not be familiar with the issues they may face, but-
Thank you, Mr. Holliday. Mrs. Blanc?
Hi. Erin Blanc Hatfield. I did send an email today that I think everyone at this table received. I appreciate the response from Mrs. Stoll. I think that the one thing from my email that I didn't get an answer to, that I did ask before, was what is the plan during the renovation for this bathroom locker room situation? I would love to hear that, like, clearly addressed, because I think that that could help with some of the questions and issues. I have, you know, other things that I said and concerns that I have, but I think that's, like, the big one that I'd love to hear more about.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bauer, could you maybe touch base with Mrs. Blanc this week to update her? I'm not sure if we are that far along.
I do know it is scheduled to be discussed at one of our upcoming programming meetings, but those decisions have not been made yet, but I'll give you a call and talk to you about it.
Actually, let me go on, and I do have time, right? So, my focus, when I said that, was the high school, but I think every school needs to be addressed too, because we have, you know, different bathroom uses down to the elementary school. So, and I think others would like to hear it. I appreciate that you would call me, and of course, I'll talk to you, but I think maybe others, you know, might be having the same question and concern. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment?
The man, oh, go ahead.
Jason Lanier, Lansdale.
Good evening, Mr. Lanier.
So, I've come up for a couple of meetings here and asked the same question. Doesn't this policy allow men into women's locker room? And I've heard no to, it's not going to happen, to, it's unlikely to happen. So, which is it? Can it happen, yes or no? Is it possible for a man to walk into the woman's or the girl's locker room at a high school event? Is that possible? Because if it is possible, that's the problem. I don't understand why this, what is this, this block that you need to, you need to somehow make transgender students feel better about themselves, so we need to allow men into the women's locker room? Why, why is this, why, how does this equate? And I've, a number of you, I've talked to a number of you, and you say, "No, it's not going to happen, or it's unlikely to happen, or it never has happened in the past, so why would it happen in the future?" What, what kind of answer is that? Why create a policy that would facilitate such a thing to happen? And so then, the answer comes back, "Well, it's required by, by the United States Department of Education, and we don't want to miss our funding." How much, how much funding did we get last year from, from United States Department of Education? Or what's our average? Couple million bucks? So, this is the price? So, what is going to happen? What, what will be your response when it does happen? Just like when you said, "Oh, we'll, we'll pass these, these great policies called restorative discipline," and you let a kid back in from a school who has a violent past, and you let him in because they identify as transgender, and they beat the mess out of a girl in a different middle school. What happens? Who takes responsibility for that? Well, you hired, you hired an independent firm, which wasn't independent. We haven't heard the results. Is, are the policies going to change because you've done that? You've allowed that to happen? So, what's going to happen when this, when there's a problem with this new policy? Why are you doing this so quickly? Why did you want to get this done so fast? First reading, second reading, no second reading, we're just going from first reading to, to passing it. Luckily, not tonight. It's going to be in the future. But why? This is a political agenda. This is not having anything to do with the safety of anybody. This is a desire. Isn't there, isn't there a policy that, or a program that Shapiro is putting forward that wants this to be passed in all the school districts? Am I right about this? You know. So, why are you doing this? For political reasons? You guys should be ashamed of yourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on.
Could I say something quick? The man from Lansdale who ran out of time, you can always write the board a letter, and Mrs. Stoll answers all the letters, but we read all the letters that are sent to us. Thank you.
I think Mr. Gallagher knows. We've responded before, right? We've corresponded before. We emailed, so, yeah, we're all good. All right. Thank you for making that. Okay. My computer is not working tonight, so I'm going to borrow Mr. Fusco's here. All right. The audience of citizens has concluded, and next up are the minutes. Can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes for the September 19th, 2024 action meeting?
So moved.
And the approval, hold on. And the approval of the minutes from the October 8th, 2024 board work session, please. Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Dr. G. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up are the committee reports, and as usual, we have finance, safe schools, ECI, policy, facilities, and operations are all on video and available for viewing on the North Penn YouTube channel, so we're not going to read those reports. If you want to see them, you can look on the North Penn YouTube channel for them. The reports that will start off, reading the report from the, are the North Penn MOC Technical Career Center, please, Mrs. Ramich.
Not me.
I always get that. I'm sorry.
That's all right. It's all good.
I'm just going to switch you.
I like her better anyway, too. The JOC has not yet met for the month of October and will convene this Monday at 7:00 PM. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. McBain. I apologize. All right. Next up will be Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. Mrs. Ramich, please.
Great, thank you. The MCIU board met on September 25th, and we started our meeting with a presentation about the Head Start Program, which was perfect timing because it then enabled us to have a background on the programs and services that are being expanded to a new location. So, the MCIU recently, actually just this week, formally opened the MCIU Discovery Center, which is located in Lansdale, and has now space for Head Start, early Head Start, and pre-K programs, as well as a post-12 entire floor for programs and services as well. It was really an incredible event, and it was great to have districts represented, and it was, anyway, it's just, it's a beautiful space and a beautiful opportunity for our students to be able to, from throughout the county, but to have it hosted here in the North Penn School District catchment area. So, the board also, at that meeting, heard first readings of policies. We approved budgets. We reviewed agendas and reports from Head Start Policy Council meetings, and we approved the MCIU Health and Safety Plan. We voted on and approved Personnel Report and new staffing, and then approved MOUs with various universities and programs. So, the next IU meeting is, I believe, on Wednesday, November 20th. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Are there any comments or questions for Mrs. Ramich? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next committee report, which is also from Mrs. Ramich for the North Penn Educational Foundation, please.
Great. As we saw in the video that Mr. Gilmer put together, the foundation held its annual golf outing on October 1st at the Tallamore Country Club. More than 100 golfers enjoyed a day on the greens and helped us to raise $38,000. This is a record-breaking amount of money raised for the annual event. I want to thank the dozens of sponsors who were an important part of the day's success. We could not have done it without you. October 1st also marked the start of the Unite to Inspire Staff Giving Campaign. During the month of October, the North Penn School District staff members are asked to consider to donate to the foundation. Last year, more than $15,000 was raised. The mid-year grant cycle has started, and the requests are coming in. All staff are invited to apply, and we support project at every grade level in every school, so we encourage teachers and staff to submit their great ideas. Any questions related to the foundation can be directed to Christine LeBroski at the ESC, or you can learn more at npennfoundation.org. And I do want to share a special thanks with the board for contributing at the sponsorship level of the golf tournament and for their support of that event. So, thank you. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Next up is our legislative report. Mr. McBain, please.
I have no formal report this evening, but just want to remind everybody to go out and vote by November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McBain. That concludes the committee reports. So, next up, we will have the solicitors' report. Mr. Summers, please.
Thank you, President Stoll. The board did meet in an executive session immediately prior to tonight's meeting, as well as during the earlier recess, for the purpose of consulting with legal counsel regarding the third-party investigation into the April 2024 incident at Pembroke Middle School, and to receive legal advice regarding asserted Sunshine Act objections. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Next up is the superintendent's report. Dr. Bauer, please.
Good evening, everyone, and as previously mentioned, I recommend the items listed on the consent agenda, items B through K, namely repeal of policies, adoption of policies for a first read, notice of intent to repeal policies, gifts to the district, student travel, contracts, approval to advertise for bid, student agreements and hearing waivers, alternative placements, and student agreements.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, and seconded by Dr. G. Are there any comments or questions?
President Stoll, the, on, for the gifts to the district, the Oak Park Elementary, the grant, is that, can that be explained, or what that entails? Is that- the grant, is that, can that be explained or what that entails? Is that yearly?
It seemed, I do not know if it's an annual grant. Dr. Waters, do you know about this grant? If you don't, it's okay.
I don't, I don't believe it's an annual one.
So the grant that, uh, Mrs. McMurtry is referencing is titled, "The National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution," and the grant is in the value of $500. Um, this is us receiving a grant, Mr. Skrocky, I assume. So I can get you the terms of that grant and what the money will be used for.
I just thought it was interesting. And I also want to thank the Inact Club, um, for their donation of the tree-free paper. I mean, they make an effort to, uh, be really good environmental stewards for the entire district. So thank you to them.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mrs. McMurtry. Are there any other comments?
Just a comment regarding, um, the collective bargaining agreement that is.
We're not there yet.
That's on the, that's on the, oh, sorry. Okay, I will wait. I'll hold on.
Everybody's getting way ahead of me tonight, so, that's okay. Um, okay, so there's no further comments. There's a motion on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next, I recommend approval of the personnel items as per the attached.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. McMurtry. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And with that motion and subsequent, uh, vote and approval, I am very pleased to introduce our new Director of Facilities and Operations, Mr. William Slaughter. Congratulations, Mr. Slaughter. There are some, there are some projects on the horizon, Mr. Slaughter.
We'll fill you in.
Welcome to North Penn.
Okay, next, uh, I am very pleased to recommend the approval of the collective bargaining agreement between the district and the North Penn Educational Support Professionals Association, PSEA NEA, for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028, a copy of which is on file in the office of the Chief Financial Officer.
Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Dr. G. Are there any comments or questions? Dr. G?
Just a comment about the, um, the collective bargaining agreement with the, the North Penn Educational Support Professionals Association. Um, as an educator, throughout my 27 years in education, I've been fortunate to work with a lot of support staff that have worked throughout our buildings. And, um, they, I think most teachers would say they're often the backbone of our buildings. They're the reason why so many things happen in the buildings that, um, you know, are behind the scenes. Um, so I just want to, um, this is not for, I think all of us, this is also a vote of confidence in the support staff that we have working within our district. And I know, I'm grateful for them. I, I work with support staff all the time and, um, am just grateful for them and appreciate the work that was done, um, to get to a collective bargaining agreement that was fair and honors the work that they do in our district.
Thank you, Dr. G.
Thank you, Dr. G. I, I do want to comment here that, uh, the leadership of NESPA is in the audience. Mrs. Dana Cook and Ms. Nikki Davis is here. Thank you so much for the collaborative process. Um, this was agreed upon without attorneys in the room, no offense, Kyle. Um, it was the administration and the leadership of our support professionals getting together and working together, uh, to come up with an agreement that's advantageous for everyone. Um, they were a joy to work with and we really appreciate everything that you do. Um, so just really pleased that that, this keeps us competitive in the market. Um, there are many benefits in this agreement that make North Penn the best place to be a support professional and we appreciate you. So thank you for being here and thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, I want to echo those comments and, and also the administration. Is this the first time we've had two early bird agreements in?
Yeah, yeah. So for those who aren't familiar with the process, there are laws kind of governing when you need to start to negotiate, formally negotiate collective bargaining agreements. And in both cases, last year with MPEA and this year with NESPA, um, we kind of opened the conversations earlier and we said, why don't we try to get in a room and work through this together as opposed to going through that formal process? Um, I think it speaks to the relationship we've built over the last few years and, uh, their ability to work with us. And I'm just really happy for all of them.
Well, thank you for all of your efforts.
A special thank you to Dr. Kim and Mr. Skrocky as well, on the administrative side of the table, because they absolutely did a lion's share of the work. Uh, Dr. Waters and myself certainly contributed, but you guys really put in the effort and so thank you for that, too.
Thank you. That's great. Okay, so, um, we have a motion. If there's no further comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, next. I recommend the approval of Change Order C001 to Designs Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,371 for unused allowances, additional plywood sheathing, and additional miscellaneous repairs encountered during construction.
Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. McMurtry, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend the approval for permission to advertise or seek pricing to pre-purchase long-lead electrical equipment for the high school project.
Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McBane, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. It's too bad Mr. Patchell is not here this evening because he would approve of this. Are there any comments or questions?
Yes, President Stoll. This is something that Mr. Patchell has mentioned and other folks in the community have mentioned. And our future, uh, Director of Facilities, Mr. Slaughter knows, Mr. Slaughter knows full and well, long lead times for this equipment is imperative that it happen now and will, will continue to do so. So I feel really confident at the board level, admin has it, and facilities has it as well. So we're good to go. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. McMurtry. If there's no further comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Including the last item and the next couple, these are certainly, uh, discussed in more detail at the Facilities and Operations Committee meeting led by Ms. Mer, Ms. McMurtry, uh, last month, just so everyone's aware. All right. So next, I recommend the approval of the Amendment of the Building Scanning and Modeling Services Contract with Production Modeling Corporation, PMC, uh, by an additional $3,650.02 for additional expenses incurred during the course of the contract.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Um, are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend the approval for the Amendment of the Underground Utility Scanning Contract with Taylor, Wiseman and Taylor by an additional $2,250 per day to perform video pipe inspection of below-slab sanitary sewer pipes inside of the high school.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. McMurtry. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fusco. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of the attached resolution certifying that the district will not exceed the Act 1 index of 4% for the 2025-26 fiscal year budget.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. McBane. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend acceptance of the Public School Environmental Repairs Grant in the amount of $250,180. And I believe, Mr. Skrocky, the bulk of this was spent over at Pembroke on the modular repairs.
That's correct.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second? Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Rush. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of the assignment of the Dewey Engineering Incorporated Construction Manager Contract as per the attached.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. McMurtry. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next, I recommend approval for the district's financing team to proceed with preparing the new money financing for the high school renovation and new construction project.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, just, uh, for those who didn't watch the finance meeting, Mr. Skrocky, I believe, um, this is in particular for the first borrowing that we're anticipating coming up. And while I think the projection said 30 million, um, you did reference that it would typically be above that, just to give some leeway on that first phase, correct?
Correct. And, and the next step really with the board resolution tonight, the next step is for bond council to prepare what's called a parameters resolution. And that parameters resolution will be presented either at the November or December action meeting. It basically establishes a maximum amount to bar for this first phase.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skrocky. Again, further discussion at the finance meeting a few weeks ago. I recommend approval of the attached extension of the Treasury Management Master Services Agreement with Univest for a three-year period commencing on October 18th, 2024.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Dr. G. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. And finally, I recommend approval of the attached court petition to sell the real property known as the quote movie lots, located at the intersection of Welsh Road and West Orvilla Road in Hatfield Township, subject to final solicitor review.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. McBane. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And this concludes my report this evening. Thank you, Mrs. Stoll.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Um, next up will then be the, uh, finance report from Mr. Skrocky, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, just a couple of updates before I give the treasures report. A reminder for all of our property owners in North Penn School District that the end of the flat period for taxes ends on October 31st. So after this date, a 7.5% penalty will apply. Um, also, the school district's annual audit that is required of our general fund and all of our, uh, bond funds is nearly complete. We do plan on having our audit firm present at the November Finance Committee meeting. November 12th is that date. And also reflecting that report will be the capital reserve fund transfer for the school buses that got delayed and spilled over to a new fiscal year. That amount was $611,310 that the board previously approved. That transfer will be reflected in the 23-24 audited financial statements. Uh, also, I wanted to mention, Dr. Bauer always kids me every time I bring this up, but the rebate program.
Award-winning.
The award-winning rebate program. I have to mention that, that it's an incredible response this year. Uh, you might recall in our discussions from the spring that the state expanded the income threshold. The maximum before used to be 35,000, now it's 45,000. Half of Social Security is counted. Well, that has resulted in a tremendous response in applicants this year. We've had 548 applications already. Um, and Joanna is processing all those applications for my review, so she's doing a great job with that. But we're within about 30 applications of hitting our all-time high, which was just this past year. So that's tremendous news. And I also want to thank Joanna. She attended two senior fairs, one in August, one in September, one by Representative Malagari and one by Representative Serrato. So this also ties in with our community outreach to try to get the word out. And clearly it's working. Now, Joanna, that means more work for you, but I appreciate you reaching out at those senior fairs. And I think the response at those senior fairs was outstanding. So the award-winning program just keeps rolling along. We had this tremendous response. So thank you for the board for your support with this. We are in our seventh year of this program. And I think there's about 25 school districts in the Commonwealth that, uh, school districts that have replicated our program here. So thank you again for that.
Mr. Skrocky, I have a quick question about that. So the other schools that have, or districts that have implemented it, have you had any feedback on their participation rates? Are they?
I, I do. And they're not anything close to ours. And I think part of it is, we are really going out of our way to spread the word. I think some take the approach, build it and they will come, and they're not coming. Uh, so the outreach that we're doing is unparalleled from any of the other districts. And no one's seeing the numbers that, that we're seeing. I talked to one district last year. I think they had a total of like 10 applications for the year. Well, we get, I don't know what, 80 on the first day. So, yeah, I, I think the outreach that we're doing and the fact that neighbors are talking to one another, that certainly helps spreading the word.
Good.
And this is one of the reasons why I do mention this ad nauseam, because in the hopes that somebody might be watching tonight that didn't know about our tax rebate program. And again, if you are eligible for the Pennsylvania Property Tax or Rent Rebate Program through the state, in all likelihood, you can receive a rebate from North Penn School District as well. So if you might know of a neighbor or a friend or a relative that receives a rebate, just check with them if they reside in North Penn School District, just to make sure they know about our program.
And as you said, I think, uh, raising that income threshold at the state level will really boost participation a lot.
Absolutely. In terms of the finances for the month, uh, this report is for the month of September 2024. Our cash receipts for the month totaled $45.6 million. Our disbursements for the month totaled $42.5 million, leaving us with a total balance at the end of September of $255 million. And that is up about $19.6 million over the same period next year. I recommend approval of the treasures report for September 2024, please.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco. Can I have a second? Mr. Rush, thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item for approval is a ratification of disbursements for the month of September in the amount of $47,450, $47.32. And just a reminder, the, these are for all funds, general fund, bond fund, capital reserve fund, student activity fund, everything. So we're recommending ratification of those disbursements, please.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. G. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, for information, we have our monthly financial reports posted. Of course, we talk about these in more detail at the monthly finance committee meetings. Um, I will just mention that, uh, the party is starting to be over with interest income because now the Fed did cut interest rates by half a percent. That obviously lowered our investment return from five and a half down to 5%. So we'll start to see our investment income coming down, but we did plan for that in the budget. Um, also, with the reduction of interest rates, we are also seeing an uptick already in real estate activity in terms of transfer tax. So now, uh, month over month compared to last year for the past couple of months now is picking up again. So we kind of get like, we kind of see like a leading indicator already from what we see with the reality transfer that, that goes on just because of that decline in interest rates already taking place.
Thank you.
Uh, that concludes my section of the finance report. Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skrocky. Okay, next up is other business. Um, Mr. Skrocky, we do, we have to take a motion for this, right?
Yes, I always like, because I'll submit the vote on the behalf of the board. I always like for the board to actually authorize me to submit the vote. It's kind of easy again this year as it was last year. These are for the officers of PSBA for the 2025 year. There's no opposition. So with your approval, I will just cast the vote on the behalf of the North Penn School District Board of Directors for the candidates. And just to let you know that the president-elect is Sabrina Backer from Franklin Area School District. The vice president is Matt Vanoy from Sharon City School District. And we also have an Eastern Zone representative, Holly Arnold from Tuckahonic Area School District. And I believe that is at Section E2. I don't believe we are Section E2. That doesn't apply. And we have three seats up for the PSBA insurance trustees, three candidates, three seats, Nathan Vanes, Richard Frericks and William LaCoff. And the school board secretary forum, there are two vacancies, two individuals. And myself as the board secretary, I actually need to vote on those two. So that's not contested either. But with your approval, I will just simply cast the vote to PSBA on your behalf.
So there's no opposition and only you can vote?
Correct, correct. So I would recommend casting the ballot for the only candidate that's on the slate for those positions I just mentioned.
Well, this is a tough decision.
It's a tough decision, I know.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McBane. Um, are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, um, is there any other business? I had a quick question now about the phone policy. I'm sorry, I didn't give you the heads up before. Is there any, been any feedback about the phone policy? Is it still going okay or?
Yeah. Uh, Dr. Waters, I don't know if you've heard, otherwise in schools, I actually spent over an hour today with students at Gwynnor, um, but there wasn't a change for elementary school. Um, but my most recent, uh, sit-down with students was at Pembroke and overwhelmingly positive. Students acknowledging, um, the success of it, the reduction in inappropriate behavior, the stress and anxiety of social media. So it's not perfect. There are conduct referrals, but that's what we expected. Um, so we have asked staff to hold a hard line on the cell phones and write students up if they have them out during times when they're not supposed to. So, um, early reports are still strong.
Good. Glad to hear it. Is there any other business from anyone else? No? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.